Thank you. Welcome, everybody. This is the May 24th, 2021 School Board Workshop. It is 6:00 PM and I'll call this special workshop to order. First is roll call. We'll start with Mr. Bryant.
Here.
Ms. Buck?
Here.
Mr. Derrick?
Here.
Ms. Astenord?
He wasn't here. It just says she left the meeting.
Yeah, I see that. Okay. Ms. Power is here.
She's back now.
Ms. Astenord? We're taking roll call. We'll come back. Ms. Tipton?
Here.
Chair is here. Ms. Astenord?
Yes, I am here. Sorry.
No worries. We thought we saw you on there. Thank you. So all seven board members are present. We'll go ahead and stand and share the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will share our mission this evening. The mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens. All right, our meeting agenda is set. And because it's a workshop, there is no changes that can be made. And so we will go ahead and dig right in with online learning. And we do have a number of people who are here this evening to join us and share. I will turn it over to Sheri Johnson, who is the Executive Director of Goodhue County Education District. Welcome, Sheri.
Thank you, Pam. And good evening to the school board. We are here to share with you Five Rivers Online. We are actually going to start with a video. So I'm going to have Lisa pull that up. And this is one of the live TV videos that we've created. We're very excited.
Every student learns differently. And for some, virtual classrooms have come with many positive benefits and outcomes. If you agree and you found yourself wanting a fully virtual K-12 option for the 2021-2022 school year, then we're excited to welcome you to Five Rivers Online, Goodhue County Education District's new virtual learning provider. Five Rivers Online is the option you've been looking for, serving the districts of Cannon Falls, Goodhue, Kenyon-Wanomingo, Lake City, Red Wing, and Zumbroda-Mizepa. At Five Rivers Online, we know the benefits of virtual learning look different for each student. Some students thrive online, enjoying the unique combination of structure and independence. Others enjoy the virtual freedom that allows for personalized learning, self-directed work, and flexible classes available anytime, anywhere. Distractions are minimized, accessibility is maximized, and relationships are cultivated every day. Virtually, students are creating connections, exploring new ideas, and enjoying the excitement that comes with learning and discovery. Five Rivers Online exists to support our students' discovery by providing complete K-12 online learning opportunities. With best-in-class teachers, cutting-edge technology, and our link to the Goodhue County Education District, we're committed to delivering classes that exceed your expectations. Your student will receive a world-class education from the comfort of home while still enjoying in-person access to the extracurricular opportunities all students enjoy. It's the best of both worlds. Curious about Five Rivers Online as an option for you and your family? Visit us today at fiverriversonline.org to learn more. Explore our program options, find answers to frequently asked questions, and get enrolled today for the 2021-2022 school year. We're excited to have you join us this coming year at Five Rivers Online.
So I'm going to have Lisa. We have the website. It's under development, but it is live. And we are taking questions already. I'm going to have her pull that up and share that screen. While she's doing that, I have two people joining me tonight. Jalen Raymond is on the call. She is Assistant Director over at Goodhue County Education District. And she helps us with, she does a lot of different things, curriculum, world-class workforce, QPR. And then we have Brian Cashman on the call. Brian is the Coordinator of Alternative Programs. So Brian does work with our online course offerings. He's actually been offering online courses for about seven years in a supplementary, supplemental version. And he also has a lot of alternative programs. And so they have been integral in creating Five Rivers Online. And he's been here with us tonight and can answer questions as well. So Lisa, would you please pull up the fiverriversonline.org website? So Goodhue County Education District has been approved as a supplemental online provider beginning in the 21-22 school year. And this is our main page. And you can see right on there in two places, there's a request information button. I think that's the most important button right now for everyone. If anyone has a question, anyone in the county has a question about this, they can send us that question. And we have people monitoring that email. And you'll be able to get responses back right away.
Sheri, can you speak up just a little bit louder for Lisa? I just got a note that they're having a hard time hearing you.
Yeah, if you want, you can just sit right here.
Okay.
You want to slide the table up?
Or you could slide the table up.
Yeah, I'll just slide my table once.
Sorry, I started to interrupt.
I'm just not projecting through my mask.
It's hard. It is hard.
I have to use that EBD teacher voice. Okay. So the other button you'll see on here is a button that says enroll. And that button isn't actually enrollment forms. It's a request to learn more about enrollment. And then you would get a packet for it. Lisa, if you scroll down, that main landing page actually has some information on it as far as our mission, vision, and some information about elementary and secondary. Five Rivers Online has two schools, a grade K-6 school and a grade 7-12 school. And it serves students who are residents of one of our member districts. So I'm going to say that again. It's not open statewide. My Superintendent's Council and the GCD Board both felt that we should begin with students that are ours and make sure that we comprehensively serve them first. And then we, at some point, might open it up. So a student who is openly enrolled from another district into one of our schools would not have access to Five Rivers. It's only students who are residents of our county. We want to make sure we have service options available to them. All right, Lisa, if you go back up to the top of that main landing page, you will see tabs across the top. Those tabs are the homepage, a tab about academics, families, life at FiveRO, and services. So we've already started abbreviating Five Rivers Online. We refer to it really as FiveRO. Lisa, if you go back, you don't have to click on it, but if you go back to the home. Okay, so under the home, you will see there's an information center, some frequently asked questions that are already there, contact information, governance, because it's the GCD Board that will oversee this, and our policies. Before I go into some of the frequently asked questions, I'm going to overview some of the other tabs. Lisa, would you please slide over to academics? And if you click on that, you will see on this page, we have grade K-6 schedule and grade 7-12 schedule. We do talk about the curriculums that will be used and other options students have. So Lisa, would you click on the K-6 schedule? One of the first things I want to know as a parent is what does the schedule for today look like? And so we have broken the schedule out on this page. The blue areas are where there would be synchronous learning with the teacher. So that's when the teacher and the student are together online. And then you'll see there's win time. So sometimes they would meet individually with students or small groups. And then you'll see some of the other courses in there. We really felt like parents had to know how much of this time is synchronous and how much of it is independent. Lisa, if you go back now to your academics, Five Rivers Online tab up at the top. Perfect. And then I won't open the 7-12 link right now. If we have a question on that, I can do that. But Lisa, if you go back up to the top, to the main menus again, just scroll. Whoops. That's okay. Just open up Five Rivers. Fiverriversonline.org. I'm so used to not being myself. Okay. Lisa, then if you slide over to families, I just want them to see what's available. There is a welcome letter there and some resources. We're still building that part out. Slide over one more to life at FiveRO. You can slide down. You can again see the schedules for the students. And then slide down to activities, please, Lisa. One of the great things about this is we know that kids have to be connected. We want them connected to their resident district. And so we encourage our Five River Online learners to stay connected with their resident district and school district. They can participate in extracurricular activities and/or athletics in their resident districts. We have to follow the Minnesota State High School League rules. We're not going to slide down to it, but you can see the top of it there already. We do have links to each of the athletics and activities pages from each of the districts there and as well as who heads that area for each of the districts. Okay, Lisa, would you scroll up to the top again? Just trying to give you a lot of information so that you can then ask questions. And then if you go over to services, when you apply to be an online provider, you have to verify to the state that you have services in all these different areas. So you can see we have covered our English language learners. And if Lisa scrolls down, she'll see Special Education. We have a homeless liaison at GCD. So parents and families have easy access to who's heading up those services and who their contact is. All right, Lisa, I'm going to have to go back to, I think it's under home. I forget. Yes. Will you pull up the frequently asked questions? And Jalen and Brian, feel free to jump in at any time. So we have three different categories of frequently asked questions. And as questions come into us, we will certainly add them here. I also have a standing meeting every Thursday morning at 8:00 AM with principals, guidance counselors, social workers, and staff like that from all of the districts to get feedback on this, to answer questions for them that they are being asked so that we make sure we're still being responsive to our stakeholders and we're answering those questions. So Lisa, why don't you just open up each one of those? And I'll just quickly run through it. And then I'm going to open it up to questions. So I've already covered this. Five Rivers Online is a comprehensive K-12 school. So it's grades K through 12, open to all learners who are residing in Cannon Falls, Goodhue, Kenyon-Wanomingo, Lake City, Red Wing, and Zumbroda-Mizepa. There is no cost, just like all other online schools. Next question is, how do I enroll? You're going to click the enroll button, and our staff will contact you and give you all the enrollment information you need. So just Five Rivers Online is just like any other brick-and-mortar school in the state of Minnesota. So a student could show up tomorrow at Red Wing High School and want to enroll. And they can enroll. There is no, you don't close enrollment. So that's a question I've been getting a lot. So you can enroll at any time. And then number four, no, there are no fees, just like there are no fees to attend Red Wing Public Schools. Okay, under courses and the technology. Oops. So if you highlight courses and technology right under the word frequently, Lisa, there you go. So I won't answer all of these right now, but I'm just going to show you the ones that are there. Our class is live or flexible. What's the learning management system? That's your student information system. We use Infinite Campus. Yes, we provide devices. And we talk about which devices, how students will be supported there. Yes, there are AP courses. Many of our teachers are going to come from our own resident districts. So they will be very experienced. And so all of those questions you might have on curriculum and technology right under that tab. And as I said, if more questions come in, we will certainly answer those. Lisa, would you slide up to the last category of questions, which is online learning? How is Five Rivers different from other online schools? Go ahead and click on that, please, Lisa. So this is a collaborative partnership with six districts. And our six districts have a really high graduation rate. Our goal is to maintain that high graduation rate. Our districts know our learners. We're going to be continuing to connect with districts and high school counselors on these students to make sure that they're getting their credits, moving forward in their learning. Trying to see if there's anything else I should. I don't, I don't think so. Number two is what I talked about with athletics. And we do this already. We have students that attend, for instance, our setting four. They do take part in prom. They do play on the football team or the soccer team in Cannon. So that's something we've always done. That's not new to us. We can continue that. And then there are a final question there that you can explore. How are we unique? Okay, I think I've given you kind of a broad overview. I know I also sent out a couple of pages of information to the board, one about K-6 and one about the 7-12 program. And I guess now, I think I'll just open it up. I do invite you to look at that website at your leisure and please provide feedback to us on this. Before I open up, I want to say one other thing. We started this process back in September. I had the exact dates, but I forgot everyone with me. And it took a while. You have to prove out that all of your courses are aligned to Minnesota State standards. You have to do a crosswalk to those standards and have multiple meetings with the department to that. We finally issued our final draft and got approval of that, I think, in late March. So we're very, very excited about this endeavor. When we first started this, the superintendent's asked me to just do grades 412. We did amend that in the end to add in K-12. And I think that was a good move for all of our students. We know that there were students that had success in online learning. We know that they're going to continue to look for those options. The advantage of us running this program is their ADM stays with your district. An education district cannot collect ADM. Statutorily, we are not allowed to collect that money. So if a Red Wing student applies to Five Rivers Online, their money goes right but stays in the Red Wing School District. So I think this is a win for our districts because we know kids will continue to seek this. And we don't want to lose that enrollment. And we want to provide those pathways for our students. And we want to keep those students connected with their communities. All right. We are ready for questions. What questions might you have for us?
If you have any questions, if you could put your name in the queue, that way it'll be easier to manage both people home and away. All right, Nikki, your first one.
Hi, I've been waiting for this because I really want all my kids, but I'm showing, I'm getting a little resistance from my girls, especially my AP girl. She goes, "Mom, do you know how high school is to do online when you're in AP classes?" I'm like, "No, I don't, actually." It was quite the opposite. I struggled. So I don't know. So would, if I had Nicoleme enrolled and she did the AP courses, if she did struggle, would there be an opportunity that these kids could go in to get help if they needed it?
Would you go back to their resident district for that help? But we would be providing that help through the online instructor.
Okay. Oh, and then...
Go ahead.
I don't, I don't know if I should say, I'm like asking questions as a parent, and I think I should be asking questions as school board members. So maybe I'll reserve my questions for those ones online. How about specials for the children? Like...
Yes, we will be having at the elementary level, music, art, just like they do in their brick-and-mortar school. That's correct.
Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Sheri. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Well, I think we all learned during this unusual 15 months that we've just experienced, or 14 months, whatever it is, the need for online technology and all that. So this is pretty nice. I'll say that. I like the idea that it stays in the county, tied to the school districts in the county. My questions kind of are, is there a student's count or size that you have set the bar at? Or is that your wait-and-see?
Well, Jim, I will say I've stayed up many nights. I'm laying awake in bed at about 2:00 AM wondering. I can't find that crystal ball yet. So there's, we don't know. We did do some interest inventory. So first, I'll answer your question one way, and then I think you're talking about class size as well. So we did do some surveying of students in all of the districts or in four of the six districts. And we know that all of those students that said yes may not ultimately enroll. I hesitate to take a guess, but I'm, why not? I'm guessing on those numbers that we could have about 200 enrolling.
Over K-12?
K-12.
So, but is there a, like, school, a brick-and-mortar?
So when we do our state plan, the state plan requires that we do not go over 40 in a class. We would never go to 40.
Right.
We just have to say yes because in statute it says we can't go over 40. We are not going to go over 40. That would not be a good learning environment for students. We know that.
Well, just a follow-up. Thank you, Madam Chair. So if a kid comes from Goodhue to Red Wing, open enrollment, are they eligible to go to this?
Yes.
Is there a Goodhue resident or a Red Wing resident going to?
Any, yes.
But if somebody that's enrolling from Hastings to Red Wing?
Cannot.
Cannot. Okay.
Any student who is a resident of one of our districts can enroll in this program.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, Brian. Hi, Jillian.
Hello, everybody.
And it's just, how does kindergarten look online? Because I know a lot of curriculum and kindergarten is interacting and, you know, social skills. So how does that work online?
Well, I'm going to turn that one over to our curriculum person. Do you want to weigh in on that one?
Oh, I'd love to because that's the fun stuff. So Nikki, that's a great question. And granted, we are building as we go. But what we really envision, all of our elementary students will log on every single morning to a morning meeting, just as if they're in a brick-and-mortar school. And so during that time period, that's going to be a great opportunity for teachers to, you know, start building that culture and that community. But it's also going to allow opportunity for peer-to-peer interaction as well. In fact, Sheri was gracious enough when she was describing the process of the application process with MDE. We at first needed to really redo some things at the, especially at the elementary level because one thing that we've really learned and MDE has learned, our Centers of Excellence have learned, our sustainable and effective online programming are where the kids aren't scheduled all day long, but that we still schedule in peer-to-peer interaction and more opportunities to teach some of those social skills. So through this morning meeting, we're still going to do that. And also during that morning meeting, aligned with our ELA curriculum for K-6 is some social-emotional curriculum. In fact, we're using Wonders, which Red Wing is very familiar with. You've adopted it. I think you're in your second year of adoption. And that includes a Sesame Street component of social-emotional learning curriculum. And then plus, we have others that we have been using and training teachers on very well. So we're excited about implementing things like zones of regulation, but opportunities for kids to get to practice those social skills. I hope that answered your question.
Superintendent Anderson?
Sheri, could you please explain how the money works in terms of who pays what in revenue and expenditures?
Yes, so we will be, we have hired a principal. Well, we have offered a position to a principal. My board meeting is this Thursday night. And then my board has approved hiring of music, art, and each of the cores to begin with. Then we are also reaching out to all of our high schools and elementary schools once we start getting enrollment in. So let me give an example in Red Wing. Let's say we have 22nd graders in Red Wing that want to do this or 23rd graders that want to do this. The Red Wing School District has already staffed that position. Suddenly, they would be overstaffed by one position. We are then going to, through a purchase of service, and I know that at every single grade level, there's, elementary grade level, there's at least one teacher who really loved online learning. I have no doubt we would have someone that would want to do that. And they would become that teacher of record. They'll stay on a Red Wing contract. And then, just like our alternative learning programs, at the end of the year, we're going to have to true all that up. But let me give you some rough numbers. Let's say each student brings in about $10,000. We know, like, at the high school level, edgenuity for an entire year for a student costs $1,200. So Jackie and I have worked out a budget so that we're staying underneath that ADM so that it won't go above any revenue the district is bringing in. And our hope is we can run it efficiently enough that we'll actually stay under that ADM. Did that sort of answer?
Maybe if I could, for example, if there were 20 kids in a first-grade classroom, 15 are from Red Wing, then we're going to pay three-fourths of the cost, you know, regardless of where the teacher, era, you know, those kinds of supports are.
And three-fourths of that revenue would come into your district.
Well, we get the full revenue.
Yes.
Yeah, we get the full ADM revenue, and then we would pay...
For those 15 kids, yes. Yep, that's a better explanation than I did.
Anything else, Superintendent Anderson?
I'm sure I'll have more questions as we go.
Sure. Anna?
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to check. I've been having some technical difficulties being on the road. So first of all, I want to say thank you. I really appreciate all of the work that you guys have put into this. I think it looks really great from a parent's standpoint. So last year, I had two of my kids kind of finishing up doing the distance learning option that we kind of, you know, were forced to throw together and wing at the last minute because of COVID. This year, and one of mine graduated last year, this year, my now 10th grader chose to do edgenuity. And it definitely has its pros and cons. And then I've helped, you know, with some students who are doing online learning, you know, the more synchronous options through Red Wing. So I really like that you guys are kind of doing somewhere down the middle of that because I feel like edgenuity was a little too hands-off and the synchronous, the whole day long, and expecting kids to be looking at a screen that entire time. I feel like that was maybe too much. So I like that you kind of have picked this, what's hopefully a happy medium. My question is, if you have a minimum number for your classes? So, you know, like, let's say only five first graders sign up. The ADM for those students is not going to be necessarily enough to pay for a first-grade teacher for the whole year. Are you thinking about combining classes if that happens? I mean, it may not be an issue, but I'm just wondering kind of what the contingency plan is if you don't have enough. Or when we're looking at high school classes, if, you know, there's just one or two kids who want a particular class offering, how that's going to work, what that looks like?
Thank you for that question, Anna. And yes, that's part of the 2:00 AM wonderings I have. The short answer is yes, it will be offered. One of the advantages we have at GCD is I have a number of teachers there that we could take a point two of or a point one of to make that work. We will make that work. But you're right. So we kind of have contingency plan on top of contingency plan on top of contingency plan for that. We will know a lot more of that as we move in. We will know a lot more of that as we move into enrollment now. It's kind of like doing one of those rooms where they line up all of the dominos, and you have to know what Domino 200 is going to do. And so you've got to have all these different plans. And that's kind of what I think of it as.
Carson?
Could you explain at the high school level anyway, as far as whether students will be able to have shared time arrangements? So they're taking some classes in Red Wing, some classes via Five Rivers Online?
Great question. So I mentioned in the introduction that we've been doing supplemental online learning for, Brian, correct me. Is it, are we in year seven now, or?
Yeah, if you describe what supplementary means as well.
So if I'm a junior at Red Wing High School and I want to take one online course or up to 50% of my schedule online, that's called supplemental versus comprehensive is anything over that 50. So yes, we will have some students that just stay in their, that stay at their high school, for instance, and take one online course through Five Rivers. And they'll be at Red Wing High School in a shared time form at the Department of Ed where we do that, and they work out all of the funding. And we will have the reverse of that. We may have a student that's enrolled in Five Rivers Online but wants to take one course such as Bayard back at their high school. And we will have that in place as well with our March Coordinator. I just actually talked to our March Coordinator this morning. So we are ready to handle that.
Wouldn't that be the case for like a wood shop too, like some of those hands-on where they need some tools?
Mm-hmm.
And then a full secondary enrollment option, kids?
Yes, so we have a articulation agreement with Southwest, just like you do. We'll be able to handle that or through the regular PSEO, if that's correct.
Nikki's in the queue.
That's good to know about the high school kids being able to do, what did you call it?
Supplemental?
Supplemental classes. And then, does this, because I have one that really worries about academics. And she wants to get into the best college ever. And she goes, um, my grades get counted next year. I'm like, okay, so does this get counted towards those things?
So we already have a system in place that our board has approved with each of the districts for our students that are currently at GCD, in GCD programs. So they take high school credit. Those credits are able to transfer back to their high schools. So we've done that for years, and it will not impact college.
Okay. And then, you know, are here, this is like our big question, like, how do we lure them back? How do we lure, you know, people to this online, you know, get them, get them in? Is there something that's going to be different about this online that isn't like any other schools or online schools? Like, I know that this supplemental is a really good idea. I really like that, because to be able to accommodate to so many diverse learning styles, like there's some kids that do really well online, actually, they do better, because they may not be social, or they may be too social, you know, where kids distract them. And then there might be kids who can't do well, you know, online and just in person. And then there's the kids that do the hybrid. I, so I really like that that's being kind of introduced. And then, have you guys thought about maybe, like, this was just a question that I came up with when, about maybe not having enough students for what, like, let's say kindergarten? Like merging them with other, other grade, like kindergarten first, maybe? Because I, I'm sure some people have known, but all children are not. Just because of the same age doesn't mean they're at the same learning level. Some exceed more, some are take learning. I definitely would have been better off with some kids younger than me, like those type of options. I guess my question is, is there room to grow to be different than everybody else to try and lure these kids into our school?
So I think what makes us unique is that it's our districts serving our kids. And we know that kids take a lot of pride in our schools, and I think we can. So if they're going to an online school up in Duluth, I think we can get them back. If they're in another online school in the state, I think we can pull them back. That connection with their member districts, I think that's a huge selling point. Kids want that. Their friends live in town with them. They, that's important to them. And in one of the other questions, you asked a number of questions, so if I miss one, let me know. When I say that we're expecting maybe 200, the surveys showed quite a few more than that. 200 is a pretty conservative number. So I'm hoping that's where it's at. I really feel like we just need to get out there now and market, because we don't want kids to choose another online option. If they're going to choose online, we want them to choose this, and we want to make it the best experience ever for them. And they might not stay there forever. They might head back to brick and mortar. We're also having a lot of conversations with the counselors in our schools about, you know, online isn't the best choice for all kids. And so how are we going to monitor that? So we have a, I forget, Brian, what was the word you used?
Well, I mentioned like an early warning, early detection system?
Yes, for the third game season. So yeah, we're going to have an early detection. We've listed some things, this and this and this are happening. We're immediately reaching out so that a child doesn't, a student doesn't end up in such a deficit that then we can't pull them back. So those are the pieces we're working on right now. Nikki, I think it's really that connection with their communities that is going to sell this to our community.
I really like the fact that it's the, so the Five Rivers, so the different, in the Good Hugh County, that opens up our children to be able to be social with other districts, kind of, and, you know, make more relationships, not just in Red Wing. I really like that. And then, just one more question. So if, okay, so we'll just take Red Wing, for instance, because we're Red Wing. If a child wanted to enroll and they were already enrolled in Red Wing, would they have to do the withdraw process? Or how does that work to just get enrolled into the online instead of in-person?
That's a great question. Yes, they do have to go through the enrollment process, just like if they left Red Wing and went to Cannon Falls or left Millwall Community. But we, having said that, we're really trying to make sure that it's as efficient to prepare them as families as possible.
Yeah, because I've withdrawn my children and then re-registered back, them back into Red Wing. And it is not a fun process to do both, you know? But maybe that's something we can kind of groom along the way too, to maybe not make it so hard. Because my thing I worry about is that, let's say, we get a student that withdraws from Red Wing in person to get online. Turns out they don't, I'm assuming something with this early detection situation or scenario? Or I'm not really sure what you had called it, but would kind of pick that up and for them to be able to go back in if it wasn't a fit?
Yes, exactly what that early warning system that we're looking at and developing with the counselors across the county will do. So that it's not that they're going to then withdraw from Five Rivers and it takes them two weeks to get back into classes. We need it to move and be much more fluid than that. Having said that, we need to give districts enough time to enroll them in courses and make sure that there's, you know, they have a schedule. And, but we are going to do everything we can to make sure that that flows smoothly.
All right, we've got about five minutes left.
Holly's in the queue.
Yep. So if you have any questions, make sure you get in the queue so that I don't miss you. So Holly?
Mute would be nice. My question is, how does this correlate with credit recovery for kids in high school? Is that a separate program still? Or is it something kids can put one of these classes in their schedule that they can do outside of the school day to make up those credits? It's a different funding source.
Yep, you're on the right track. So just like at Red Wing High School, kids can do extended time. They can do a course after the school day. In Five Rivers, they'll also be able to do that. So it would be after the school day or a zero hour. And they could, they would collect the additional revenue for that. And yes, yep, we've already talked about that. Great question, though.
So those credits can go towards their diploma, then?
I'm sorry, what?
Those credits can go towards their diploma, and it doesn't have to be an online Five Rivers component other than they just registered in that capacity?
Well, it would be under Five Rivers, because that's their school of enrollment. But the ADM, the extended ADM would still go back to their resident district.
Okay.
Did I answer that correctly, Brian?
Yeah, and I think, Holly, you might have asked, do the credits count on the transcript? And they would absolutely count, yes.
Yeah, that's, yep, that's what I was, you got it. Thanks.
Thank you. Arlen?
Yeah. As I said before, I really am a proponent of Red Wing District doing their own thing. I know we would not have been able to do that on our own at this time. And this is what's in front of us, and so I'm going to roll with it at this time. First thing, I think we need to take a good hard look in our elementary level at targeting our home schooled kids. And that is a way to bring revenue back to the districts if we can get there along with the people online learning and other venues, whether you saw it on TV or whatever it is. Couple of concerns I have is scheduling conflicts with online learning versus our local school district if they want to participate in high school band or, well, shop classes, metalworking, woodworking. Are those times going to be flexible? I am assuming graduation requirements for each member district would be based on the credits. And the credits from here would be similar to what we would have in our old local district. And just another observation, if we're going to have supplemental courses or whatever we wanted to call them in the high school level, I think we need to be looking hard at an open campus situation here in Red Wing, at our high school.
Open campus as far as lunch, or?
Open campus as far as when to come in and going throughout the day. Because if you're taking online classes, or else we're going to have to have an online class area in the building, and I think that's defeating the purpose of it. So we have to recognize that we're going to have students coming to school in the morning and leaving in the middle of the day, or, I mean, or doing online in the morning and coming to school in the afternoon. And that's all part of what's going to happen or need to happen with this whole thing. So those are just a couple of observations and stuff. I want to see this work. I still believe in my own mind, the only true way to have buy-in from the community is to do our own thing, because we had our parents very concerned when we talked about bringing kids back to school early back in January in the edgenuity. We don't want edgenuity. We want our own teachers. Well, we may have our own teachers, or we may not have our own teachers in this, through that district. And that's where I'm going to leave it.
So a couple of things. We already have students that do shared time courses here at the high school. So we have, we have over a decade of experience with that. So it was scheduling for the band. We resolve that every year and are able to do that. Credits, that's probably a longer discussion. About a year ago, my superintendent's council looked at the credit requirements in each district and the statements of the requirements. And we came up with what the requirements would be at GCD based on those conversations. And then that went to my board. And I can talk more about that, that the counselors, we know how to transfer those credits back and forth and have a good working relationship with all the high school counselors. What was the third thing you said, Arlen? I can't remember.
Open campus. We talked about specials and woodworking and such, graduation requirements and credits. And then I said that we have to be looking at the need for open campus for students to come and go if they're doing supplemental courses through the year, half one, half the other.
And the other piece was?
And that's something that we have to do here. That's not.
Yes. The other piece was about edgenuity and having the teachers. Like Anna pointed out, it's not going to look like it did with edgenuity this year, because there will be our own teachers. When I say our own, teachers from the county right now, unless we have to go out of the FTE that's available here in the county. We have to, then yes, we'll be hiring teachers for this, just like we hire teachers for our alternative high schools or those that serve all of the kids in the county. So like Charlie, those teachers serve all of the kids in the county. So we'll be really looking for some staff that really like this.
And I think Arlen brought up a good point too about targeting those homeschoolers and seeing.
We have brought that up at our superintendent's council.
Good.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Bryant?
Quickly, are you marketing or promoting this?
Well, last Friday, I sent out the website and information to each of the superintendents on how to market. They asked specifically themselves to be able to reach out to their communities. And so they all got that on Friday. And then you saw the public service announcement tonight. We're hoping to get that out to the radio, to whatever. So that's our next step, and we've been talking about that.
Social media, Facebook, good. Okay, thank you.
And also personal phone calls, especially the kids who've chosen another online option. And I cannot emphasize it enough, our online option is going to be better because of the local connections. They'll be studying with our students, with our teachers, at least from the co-op. They'll be using our Wonders curriculum for K through 6. And so they can come in and out and still, you know, experience that supplementary. So at the high school, for example, they can come in and take our band, our choir, any class, you know, especially the hands-on classes. They possibly could participate in field trips that are sponsored, and of course, prom and graduation halls. Sorry, I had to jump in that, because I think it's really important. And I think the best way to reach those kids is to have somebody from our staff contact them directly to explain those advantages, in addition to everything else we talked about.
Yes, once my board meets on Thursday and our principal is officially hired, that will be where we head.
Anna?
I think most of what I wanted to say has already kind of been covered. But like with the open campus, we do already have a lot of that happening with students who are going back and forth with Southeast or other programs. So I totally trust that, and, you know, students who are doing alternative high school but still taking some classes at the Red Wing High School. I totally trust that GCD can handle this and work that out. And then with the homeschooling, like, I totally agree that that's a group we need to reach out to. But I do believe that has some complications, just in that there are some rules about how much the district can engage with homeschool students. Like the, if it's invited by those homeschool families, that's fine. But like for the district to reach out, I think that gets a little bit complicated. I don't know if maybe Carson can clarify some of the details with that, but I believe that gets a little bit hairy.
Yeah, and clearly, our role is to explain options to families.
To market.
You know, every, every family has a different circumstance, different needs. Homeschooling is an effective option for many homeschool families. So we're not trying to erase that possibility. But I know if I were a homeschool parent, I might want some help with math curriculum, for example. So they can still teach some of the subjects at home with the parent, but they could also access our math curriculum, so that you have an expert in the field, you know, working with our kids. So, yeah, you know, we don't want to push the recruitment, you know? That's really not what it is. It's really to share the options, because we want our families to make the best possible option for their kids.
All right, Arlen?
Yeah, two quick questions. One, Carson just mentioned ADMs and being funded for ADMs. How would that work if a student is homeschooled but opted in for math class or just a couple of things, but not the entire day?
It's called shared time.
So then we would have just a partial ADM, and the other part would be just nobody collecting it? Is that correct?
Or I think, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, please, Sheri, um, if it's a Red Wing student, uh, then we would get the full ADM allotment uh, for, uh, you know, that student. Are are you talking about homeschooled child?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Homeschooled student in Red Wing that just took one, one part of-
Yeah, then we'd get a proportionate share. So if it's one-sixth of the time, then we'd get one-sixth of the ADM.
And the second part of the ADM collecting comes to, if a student is enrolled in one, another, uh, open enrolled from, say, Red Wing to another school district, and then they go into online learning, who gets the collecting of the ADM?
I was waiting for that question.
I asked the same question just a few days ago.
Yes. Um, so-
People want to know.
So if, for instance, a Red Wing student is currently open enrolled to Cannon Falls, and they decide to, a Red Wing resident student is open enrolled to Cannon Falls, they decide to go to Five Rivers Online, their ADM goes to Red Wing. So if a student enrolls in Five Rivers Online, it ends the open enrollment that was in place. The ADM must go back to their resident district.
Resident district, not the district, because all of them are resident districts technically in your formula. So you're very-
They're the student district.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So if we have somebody enrolls in Red Wing to Lake City, and then they do online learning-
Now their ADM is returning to you.
Their ADM is back in Red Wing.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, and Nikki, I'm going to give you the last question.
Oh, thank you, Pam. Um, so here's my question. What do we got on teaching real Minnesota history here? Um, we have history courses?
So Nikki, I'll admit, I did not get into the curriculum like Jillian and Brian did.
Okay.
So I, I can't answer that. Jillian?
You bet we do. Um, so we, ju- just like any, um, brick and mortar school, we need to cover, um, Minnesota's academic standards. And so, um, social studies is a key piece of that. Like, Nikki, just for your information, right on my desk right now is a huge, um, piece of, um, all the different pieces of, good pieces of literature, um, African-American Indian options, and looking at the complexity of text going across the, um, grade levels and sorry, but once a teacher, always a teacher, we've got to help connect the dots for our kids. And so one thing that's so exciting is how we're really building the multi, um, interdisciplinary units. So we can learn about history and our own history by also learning how we write and how we read, because we're going to go and read for real, and we're going to apply that. And so is that getting to your question, Nicole, Nikki?
Yeah, and then I don't know if you, um, our sisters, our sister tribe, Shakopee, I know that they just did something with the state of Minnesota, um, donated, um, some really good educational pieces. On the history here, would Five Rivers Online, would they be, um, maybe, would it be available to them to incorporate that, you know, because you are state of Minnesota technically still. I do you know anything about that?
I I don't, but I'm sure want to go and find out more information, and I have a few people in Shakopee, so I'll be making some
Okay.
connections very soon.
Good, 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 good. All right, wonderful. Thank you.
Oh, Holly. Okay, you are the final, final, last word.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, are the teachers going to be housed in the same space, so they have each other as resources? Because it can get pretty lonely. If you're that teacher out there who's doing first and second grade at that building, so where will they be sitting, teaching from, number one? And number two, this is a lot, and I don't know if we fully comprehend the enormity of it. I think that we have a really good idea of how big this is and how big it could become really fast. Um, but it's, it's going to keep us on our toes. Okay, question?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, um, Holly, I think the answer to your question is, um, yes and yes. Uh, so there are going to be teachers that we're going to need to have a common space for. Um, but a lot of online teachers across the state of Minnesota actually teach from their home. Um, and we're also going to have teachers, we might have a point two math teacher from Red Wing High School, for instance, that's going to be in their classroom. Um, so they're, they're not going to come over for just that point. So it's a little bit of both, and it will just kind of depend on enrollment. But we will certainly keep you up to date on that as we go forward.
All right. Well, as it always happens, you'll be, uh, later on, sitting, watching TV and thinking, I should have asked X, Y, and Z. So I know Sheri and Carson will be available for our ongoing questions and, uh-
And a reminder, Pam, about that request info link on the website. So if you have a question, certainly put it in there and and encourage, um, people in the community to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate you being here, Sheri, and, uh, Brian and Jillian, we, uh, thank you for your time and good luck to you. We're excited to, uh, see how this grows and develops. So awesome. Thank you. Next on our agenda is, um, a discussion about, uh, board pay and compensation. Uh, this is always a, a difficult discussion to have right in January when new members are coming on board, and um, then we always put on that agenda, board pay in January. And so we wanted to come back and have this discussion, um, to talk about where we're at, where we fall in amongst other districts and, uh, plan moving forward. So it looks like Superintendent Anderson put uh, following pay scale on there as a starting discussion. Um, do you have anything else that you would like to say as we begin this?
You know, I'll just say that, um, you know, the current column obviously is the current pay. And then I literally just, you know, made some adjustments for the, um, you know, 2022, again, as a starting point, not as an actual recommendation. Uh, because I know how much time the the chair, well, each of the officer positions I'll put into the position. Um, and, uh, and then in addition to that, I just threw out the possibility of adding $200 per year. Should probably be more than $200 per year, I got to be honest with you, but I wanted to throw that out as a starting point. And the primary reason is that we spend so much time, uh, and it's a, it's a difficult conversation, as you said, Pam, right at the beginning in January. And so if we can come up with a plan now, at least then we can, uh, move forward with without as much, uh, discussion or debate, uh, right away in January.
Well, and you know, there's, um, a whole list, um, in our board packet of other districts. I hope you had a chance to take a look at that prior to this evening. I appreciate, uh, whoever it was that put all that together, because that's a lot of work. So thank you to that. Uh, we are all over the board, as you can see throughout the whole state. Some people get paid, or some board members get paid per meeting, some get paid per month. Um, there's some annual fees there, so, um, we'll just open it up for discussion and see where people are at. And I believe, Holly, you are in queue.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I I really like that you did this and put this together in this format so that it can be more structured and people can um, have a better understanding. Because I know in January, when we do it, we show all these figures, and people are like, I've never done this work before. I don't know what the mon- I, you know, is I, I've said this before, I didn't even think I got paid when I ran for school board. So when I found out I got paid from Arlen, I was like, oh, there's money involved. Like, so I think it's all over the board on how people perceive this, and it is a tremendous amount of work. And if you average it out, what do we? And I'm not complaining, but it's what, $7 an hour, something, or $6? So number one, I really like that you spread it out like this for people to see. And, um, I'm fine with whatever the board wants to go with. Is it something that we are looking to make a vote on in the, in the near future? Or are we just preparing ourselves for longer talks to go into November? I'm just curious.
That's a great question. I don't think we even brought that, uh, up in the conversation that we, uh, wanted to discuss this evening, but that's something we should decide as a board. I mean, uh, I think we set in January our, uh, salaries for the year. So if we were to change, we would have to go back and and, uh, have that as a, an action item. We certainly could if we wanted to do that, or we could have a discussion to, uh, start in 2022. Um, with that first meeting in January. So I think it's really up to this board on how we want to proceed. Jim?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Yeah, whatever we decide at a future board meeting, this is a workshop we won't be deciding tonight. Whatever we decide, I would say we would, uh, be effective in January 2022. I'm not interested in going back, because that was decided by the board in January, so.
I think that makes complete sense, because, uh, we, that's what we did decide in January for this year. Um, one of the things that, um, we did historically discuss is trying to do where you came with the $200, Superintendent Anderson, 200 and 200 and 200. We are trying to get ourselves slowly up, uh, to be, um, equal to or a little bit fairer, um, with the, with other school districts, because we are, if you look at that list, we're pretty low. Um, historically, uh, school, the school board has been very conservative in in giving ourselves raises, and we're low. Um, and so $200 over the next few years would get us a little bit closer to being kind of in the average. Uh, so Anna?
Thanks. Um, I meant to email, um, everybody and, um, totally forgot to, but, um, you know, back before this conversation in January, I took that spreadsheet from MSBA and, um, plugged it into Excel so that I could kind of play with it a little bit. And, um, the average amount for schools that that school board members are paid for schools with 2,000 to 3,500 students is almost $3,500. Um, and ours at 3,000, you know, is on that lower side then. Um, and I did, um, like our surrounding districts, the average, um, pay per student, um, for that were low as well. Um, and I think it is a difficult conversation, you know, to vote to pay ourselves more. Like, when I started plugging all of this stuff in, I was expecting to see that we were paid too much. Um, and that's not what I found. Um, and then I guess now, having done the job for a little while, a couple of months here, um, thinking about, um, wanting to have a, um, equitable system and being able to get a variety of voices on the board, um, you know, and I know you guys all on the board know this, I'm more seeing this for anybody who happens to be watching it. Um, you know, we put in a lot of time on our own, which is, you know, I totally expected. Um, but the time for the meetings, um, is pretty significant as well. And if you, um, typically work in the evenings, um, if you have, uh, children and you don't have, uh, another adult partner who is available in those evenings, um, and you have to hire babysitters, things like that, it does cost money for us to, um, you know, be able to be a functional board member. So, um, you know, on one hand, I feel like, oh, you know, we should, why should we vote to pay ourselves more? But on the other hand, if we want to make this equitable for people to be able to be on the board and participate, who, maybe a single parent, um, maybe, you know, working varieties of jobs where they have things happening in the evenings and need to, you know, be able to, um, take time off work to be able to attend meetings and things like that. I think the compensation then, um, even though it might be that $7 an hour kind of a thing, it's, it's something that kind of helps offset those expenses. Um, so I think my feelings on it have changed since, you know, initially looking at it, um, in January and then kind of doing it for a while and thinking about, um, you know, inviting other people to run for school board, that, um, it's none of us are going to get rich doing this, but you shouldn't go into debt to be on the school board either. Um, it shouldn't, um, hurt you to be on the school board, at least financially.
I think that's a sentiment I heard over and over again, Hannah. You're exactly right. We shouldn't, uh, be in the hole for doing this job, you know? And you're right, there are so many people, I think, that would be interested in coming to the table, but it's just not feasible, um, because of all the reasons that you said. Uh, Nikki?
Um, I've always, well, I volunteer most of my time anyways. Um, I have the means to. But I like when, uh, Anna had said that, because that made me think that, yes, that we're actually not making changes for us, but we're ma- actually creating space for other p- other voices to come to the table. So, um, thank you for saying that, Anna. Because, I mean, I, I want to do the right thing by everybody, but, um, I also like thinking of that future, too. So thank you.
Arlen?
Thank you. Um, I'm looking at this table here, and it looks like it's proposing that the chair is being paid $1,500 a year more than could be paid $1,500 a year more than a regular director. Um, I think that's maybe a little high. I think 1,000, 700 maybe was low. I think 1,000 is a better number. I didn't really feel it was necessary for vice chair to be paid extra. I served as vice chair several, at least a couple of years here. Uh, the clerk has got a job that is, takes an extremely amount, large amount of work, from what I know. Certainly worth at least, uh, $500 more a year and possibly 700 to $1,000 a year more. Uh, from what I know of the treasurer's position, and maybe I'm missing something, there really isn't that much extra work involved being a treasurer, so I I question paying that $500 more per year. That's just, got feelings of me, I think those numbers are off on that part. The other part of this, I've been saying it for years and years, and that we're underpaid for what we're doing. Comparing to other districts is great on one end. You got to compare to what other people are being paid in the community, what certainly we, over the years, we've looked at what we can afford. I really think regular director should be paid at least $4,000 a year. Uh, that's been something there, and we've made great side strides to get to where we are now, from when I first came on the board six and a half years ago. I think the very first meeting I came to, I said, the board isn't being paid enough for what they're doing. And I've said that all the way along through here. It's difficult to raise pay for yourself, but sometimes it's got to be done. And, uh, far as I go, if we raise the pay, it's not going to make a huge impact on me, because I only got a year and a half left, and I'm sure we're not going to do anything this year, so it'll only be one year's pay. Anything, so I'm not doing it here to put money in my pocket. It's for future people. People to serve on the board, to be compensated for their expenses and their time. And and I don't know where the number came at, $6 or $7 an hour for your time to analyze stuff, but I I figured I was probably getting, maybe lucky to get a dollar an hour for what I've been doing, so. And I'm not complaining about that dollar an hour versus being a buck and a half we're raising, but, uh, there is an extreme large amount of time that goes into being a board member, if you work with most of different committees. So, thank you.
Well, like we said, this isn't anything that we're going to act upon this evening, um, but, uh, it's a good discussion to have, and, um, you know, we'll collect feedback from now until the end of the year. Of course, this is always something that we put on our January, um, organizational meeting, so we'll see this again. But any other last comments or thoughts on this, Jim? I see this is raised.
Yeah, I I don't think, are we actually going to wait till January to make a decision on this? I thought the idea is to discuss it and finalize it before January of this year. Uh, I think I'm more comfortable finalizing it in an upcoming meeting and, uh, effective in January. And then every year, January, just kind of re- re- we go through, it continues on from, uh, until, uh, if you want to do it through 20- until, if you want to do it through 2024, then in 20, and then 20, during the summer of 2024, you revise it. That's my thinking.
I was kind of thinking along Jim's lines, but you know, obviously it's up to the board to decide.
I don't think we want to wait till January to decide.
I'm completely fine with however we want to tackle this.
And I'll just say, and I've said this before, Anna hit it on, Ireland a little bit hit it on. I don't do this for the money either. I think it's more like 50 cents an hour you put in. You get paid for all you do. But people shouldn't have to go backwards. And Anna kind of hit the nail on the head there and so did Nikki a little bit. Not that we are, but you want to give the opportunity for people that, you know, not everybody works eight to four and can leave participate in committees, their functions or board meetings. So you want to make it enough so they can look at and say, well, I can give up this or that because I'm getting compensated a little bit on this end here. We're not going to get rich. Nobody is. Nobody wants to be. We just want to be something that is fair and equitable. And I like the idea of new voices. That's these boards changed in the last 10 years from now. There's not a member left on this board that was here 10 years ago. So change is inevitable. Change is a daily thing.
Anna, are you back in or is it Ireland?
Yeah. I just wanted to say I agree with, you know, looking at this and actually making, you know, voting on something at a sooner than January meeting, you know, whatever, I guess, meeting has some room in the docket. I wouldn't be looking, personally, I wouldn't be looking to change things for this year. I feel like we already made that decision for 2021. But I think it would be easier to develop a structure, have that plan in place. And then, you know, it can always be looked at in January to say, this is the, you know, kind of like we have in our our practices for when we review, you know, different policies and things like that, that, you know, it's on our schedule. This is what we're planning. And just kind of to have that conversation and check in and see how different board members are feeling and, you know, of course, be able to adjust if, you know, massive budget changes happen or, you know, whatever else is going on. But I like the idea of making a decision sooner than later so that, you know, future board members and can have an expectation of what it's going to look like going forward. And there's just less that we're having to decide on the fly in January.
I like that idea too. Thanks. And Ireland?
Yeah, not a lot on this, but I just want to show this or make a comment on the blue pay of all these different districts, what everybody's getting paid and stuff. I don't see anything here identifying as of what date that pay was, if it's current or if it's a year old data or two-year-old data by whoever gathered this. Then as you go through it, sometimes some of these things don't add up going across the whole thing to get to an actual number for a person either. So how people respond to what their pay is may not be totally 100% comparable because of how people describe what they pay. And maybe there's, maybe there's certain things that pay per committee that they didn't mention when they said their annual pay. So it's a good tool to have here, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't count on everything being 100% current on the price and that possibly that it's old. I don't, I don't have the dates here.
Yeah, and I can, I can answer that. The Minnesota School Board Association actually compiled the data. And then we get a copy of it in usually the late middle or late December. So it's shortly before the reorganization.
So it's at least a year old.
Yeah, or at least it's seven months old or six months old. Yeah, but I agree with you. I don't think we put too much stock in it because there are so many variances.
I just want to say that it's not necessarily 100% comparing apples to apples.
Right. I agree.
Well, what I'm hearing and seeing is that we'd like to bring this to an agenda in the near future with some structure. And then when we get to January for organizational meeting, we'll revisit it again and but we'd like to act on it sooner rather than later. I think that's a great idea. So I just put it on my agenda to discuss at the next agenda meeting. So we'll, we'll get that on the, on the docket here soon. That might be a good summer thing to tackle. Things usually have a lighter, we have a lighter agenda usually in the summer. So that might be a good time to put it in.
Yeah, the three of us can figure out the timing.
Sounds good. All right. And then our final agenda item for this evening is to talk about policy 808.
Shonda Jorgensen is on the line. So I'd like her to enter the call. We've been very busy the last week or so after the board wisely decided to discuss this topic tonight. There have been a lot of changes going back and forth with the state. Of course, you have CDC guidelines. You have our own local policies and practices. So it's kind of been in flux, but Shonda is on it. And even today, George, Shonda and I were chatting about what we'd like to see for graduation. So if you're okay, I'd like to hand it over to Shonda to present some information.
We were, I was hoping by now we would have very clear guidance on what we're, what we should do at least for summer programming. And I have to break the bad news to you. There's not very clear guidance as of yet. You know, the executive order says that school districts have to follow the safe learning plan through the last teacher date. So that for us would mean Jan, or June 4th. And so we have to, you know, we still have to wear masks when you're in the building. You still have to wear them. Student staff, anyone in the building still has to wear them. And technically, that's through our last teacher day, which is June 4th. But then in the safe learning plan on May 20th, it said, face covering requirements for schools apply to all student staff and other people in school buildings during the instructional day or when riding a school transportation vehicle to and from instructional day. The requirement does not apply to after-school activities such as sports and other extracurriculars. So we have something that says we have to follow it through the end of the, you know, the end of the last teacher day. Now they're saying we have to follow this, but now it's only during instructional day. And then something that just popped up here in the last couple of days, there's a group called the Minnesota Children's Cabinet that was appointed by the governor. He got a bunch of people together and said, hey, let's, let's have you guys help decide these, these decisions. And they came out with, any licensed childcare provider must require masks through July 1st or till we get to the 70% of the 16-plus vaccinated. So they're kind of going back to what the governor is saying or said before the CDC came out with, you don't have to wear masks. And we have to follow the masking requirements, which is anyone who's inside has to wear a mask, especially if you can't social distance, that kind of thing. So we're, we've got a few things going on. We don't have, we have, for right now, we have clear guidance on what we should do for childcare. So Kids Junction is required to wear masks until July 1st or we hit that 70% to 16+. But we have issue with, well, we have 30 kids at Twin Bluff who are part of Kids Junction, but then go over to Summer Blast, which is a summer, summer school program. We have yet to have guidance that says they have to wear it at school. So if we take away our mask mandate right now, we're going to have kids in Kids Junction that have to wear it for the first hour and a half in the morning. Then they go to the other side of the building. They don't have to wear it because technically we don't have guidance that says they have to do that. And then they go back to Kids Junction and they have to wear it. You know? But we can go back to the safe learning plan and say, okay, well, is Safe School or Summer Blast considered instructional, an instructional day? Technically, those days are counted on next school year. So we can't really go by. So we're kind of in flux right now. We don't have very clear guidance on what we should be doing for all of our programming in schools. And right now, we have a mask mandate in place. It's a board policy that says you have to wear a mask if you're in school. We can't really vote on it today to change that today. The first time we could do that would be Jan, or not we, I can't say me, but you. Would be January 7th, which is our first day of summer school, first day of Kids Junction, first day of everything. So changing, you know, right now, the COVID team would like to see it just stay in place. We'd like honestly to see it stay in place for the entire summer. The kids have been coming to school. They've been wearing masks. They're used to wearing masks. It is a mitigation strategy that helps not bring in COVID. Kids 11 through birth can't even get vaccinated yet. And the Minnesota Department of Health says that if you are unvaccinated, you are strong, it is strongly recommended that you wear a mask. So, you know, half our student population can't even get vaccinated yet. So we would really require them to wear masks, or we would like to require them to wear masks. So unfortunately, I wish I could come to you and say, this is what they say to do. This is what we should change our policy to be. But we just don't have that specific guidance yet, unfortunately. And so for now, we, you know, like to keep it in place and then kind of table it until we get clearer guidance. You know, the COVID team will say masks, obviously, you know, we like to be the safest as possible. But we, you know, that's just because we know it works and we know it's safe. But I can't point at a Minnesota Department of Education or Health document that says this is what they're telling us to do. So I don't know if that's really good news or bad news, but unfortunately, we didn't get what we wanted in the last week and hope to get it very, very soon.
Shonda, can I just ask you a series of questions, just to kind of segment?
Yep. Yep. Hold on just a second.
Okay.
Sorry, I have a kid getting chips and it's like.
No problem.
Not important. Okay.
The rest of this school year, you know, until June 3rd, the last, student day, June 4th, which is half day of teacher duty day, we're following the guidance during the instructional day.
Right.
Adults will be wearing face masks. I think we all, you know, kind of got that. What about after-school activities through June 3rd or June 4th?
According to our, according to what we have to follow, and that's the safe learning plan, the requirement is that we don't allow or we don't have to apply it. Now, our policy though, is what it has been the whole year. So do we follow what our policy is and policy is until we change it? Or do we disregard the policy and just now follow the guidance by the Minnesota Department of Health? I don't know if that was a helpful question or not, but.
Can you show me the provision in the face coverings policy, please? That addresses that one, the after-school activities? Sorry for putting you on the spot, Shonda.
No, that's okay. At least I pulled this up. So I'm not sure. Do we have a distinction in here that says after-school you don't have to wear them, but during school you have to? Or is it any school-related activity you have to wear one?
I don't think we've differentiated yet, have we?
I don't, I don't think so, actually. Because at the time when this was written, it was every activity.
So obviously, we have to talk about how to revise this policy and at what point. Because as information continues to change and evolve, our policy is going to have to continue to change and evolve. So obviously, we can't do that this evening and we, we have so much information that we need to have first before we even hash out what we're going to do or say in policy 808. So
Right.
You know, this is a good pre-discussion to the discussion, I think, because we
It kind of, and I was hoping to have more, you know, we were told the guidance would be coming in a few weeks. You know, a few weeks could be two or five. So, and unfortunately, we just haven't, we haven't gotten that yet. We do have that one children's cabinet policy that says we have to, you know, childcare. So this is not just school childcare. This is certified childcare in the state. They have to wear masks until we, July 1st or we hit 70%. And that could just be that they aren't quite sure yet. So let's just throw that out there. And then when we get more information, we'll revise it. So at least for Kids Junction, that will have to be part of the plan. I just wish we had something like that for, you know, inside Lego robotics or extracurricular activities inside during the day, what would be considered the instructional day. Or, you know, kids moving from one setting to another childcare to, you know, an instructional setting. You know, do we carry it over? Do we let them drop it? I, you know, if they're in the same building and they're seeing the same kids, they're doing the same thing they did during school. I don't see why we wouldn't require it. But I know we're, you know, people are ready to get rid of it. But you have to remember that COVID isn't gone. You know, and so do, what can we do in our schools to keep our kids safe like we have all year? So.
Another question, Shonda, that's time sensitive would be graduation ceremony.
Sure.
Describe what, what the plan is. George, Shonda talked about it earlier today.
So if it's outside, no masks. It's outside. Let's let them have it. If it's inside, since we no longer have to limit the capacity of the event, before it was going to be four members per student graduating, if it was inside, we no longer have to follow those guidelines. And so since it's in our building and it's still technically a teacher workday, we're going to require face masks at graduation if it's inside. Just bringing that many people together, it just, it's safer that way. We're not social distancing like we, like we were in the past. We're not even doing the three feet, three foot. And so the masks is just one of the mitigation strategies we're going to keep. Are we going to turn anybody away if they don't wear it? No, but we will have, you know, masks available for people who forget. We'll remind them that, hey, you're in the, in the building, you should be wearing a mask. But we're not going to be, you know, enforcing or throwing people out because they aren't. I have a feeling though, that, you know, we've been wearing masks all year. People have come to the building, know they have to wear a mask. This isn't something new. It's only for a few hours. It's not like they have to sit there for eight hours in the air-conditioned or un-air-conditioned gym to do that. It's just something and, you know, it's something you can do to help everyone else in that building. And so we're just going to keep masks if it's indoors. I told George, make sure you get it outdoors. Try to get it so it's outdoors. And then we're
If it's outdoors, there's no social distancing requirement and no mask will be required. We may still recommend them, you know, but it won't be required. Indoor graduation, once again, no social distancing requirements. There are no capacity limits and but we will require the masks if it's indoors because of those other two things. Is that, is that the same as what you just said, Shonda?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
All right. We've got a number of people in the queue. Ireland, Nikki, and then Anna.
Thank you. Short of having a special meeting and the time to notify to have a special meeting, we are bound, in my opinion, to follow our mask policy. And our policies, I'll go to item 2C. Unless an exception described in part IV below applies, all student staff and other people present indoors in school buildings and district offices or riding on school transportation vehicle are required to wear a face covering. So they're saying if we're indoor, this is it. Then IV, exceptions and alternatives, temporarily remove a face covering. It talks a little bit about face shields and different things like that. Staffs, item IVC, staff, students and other people present in school buildings or district offices may temporarily remove their face covering or face shield in the following situation. One talks about engaging in class activities or recess outdoors. Item two talks about during specific activities that the Minnesota State High School League has identified as an exception to mask face covering requirements, which would be our sports. So that really doesn't follow into us. Then there's other students receiving nursing services. Item three, pre-kindergarten kids. Item four. Item five, when aware needs to remove their face covering to eat or drink, no care should be taken to maintain distance. And then during indoor practices, item six, performing while we're sitting, active public speaking. And then during indoor practices, item six, performing, always saying active public speaking or whatever, there's several other things there. And when required by school staff for identification, I could go on and on. But there are no real exceptions that I see that would allow us to change the face covering for the graduation. I guess unless you determine it's not a school function, but we said they're going to be worn in our buildings. So the bottom line is, I think we are bound to wear face coverings in the school building until the school board changes or revokes the policy. And I don't see that happening indoors until our next meeting. And I think it should be set up at that meeting to have direction what we should be looking at doing at our next school board meeting. And that's the way I'm approaching it. Graduation indoors, we have to wear masks, outdoors we don't, this is consistent with what you talked about. But this is the policy, this is what we are bound to follow until we revoke it. So, and the school board does need to revoke it when the time comes. So I hope that's on the agenda, how we go about it. Do we revoke it by saying when the administration determines it's time to remove the mask policy? Or are we going to keep the policy a hundred percent in control of this school board? That just has to be determined at our next board meeting or a special meeting. Thank you.
Do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I think that's well said, and I think it's consistent with what Shonda just presented. Because we keep the, for now, face masks for the summer programming, indoor graduation, obviously through the school year and childcare settings.
And this, I guess, if I follow up, this is regardless of what the state or anybody gives us for guidelines. Our policy says this, it doesn't say unless the state guidelines change. So it's taken after the board to change this policy.
All right, Nikki and then Anna.
I, I like your direction. I'm always gonna, because I agree with you, you know, I'm obviously anti-vaxer. And I provide plants. This is what, I had COVID, I had zero symptoms because I was purifying my home and my lungs with Sage, an antimicrobial, antiviral airborne. So I, I have no problem wearing a mask and I honestly feel the safest indoor. I agree, indoors, close contact, outdoors, it's, it's, it's a whole other thing, you know? So I would have to say I trust your direction versus our state, so thank you.
Anna.
Thank you, and thank you, Shonda, for going over all of this stuff. I do hope we get more information from the state soon. I, you know, I know we're not voting on it right now, but I'm not in favor of changing the policy anytime soon. Because even though we're seeing, you know, higher vaccination rates for kids twelve to eighteen, it's still, the vaccine is not an option for kids under twelve. And that's who the majority will be at Kids Junction, at Summer Blast. So even if all the adults who are with them are vaccinated, those kids still aren't. And they don't even have the option to be. So I think it's important for us to take as many safety precautions as we can during that time period. Because I don't want to see COVID numbers spike up. And, you know, a lot can happen between June and September. But I think our, being able to have our kids back in school in September and have things be as normal as possible in September should be like our main goal, right? This has been a fun experiment, but it's time for things to be normal again. So, you know, I want us to do as much as we possibly can to, to make life normal in September. And I think that that means being relatively cautious throughout the summer. Of course, if, you know, information from the CDC and Minnesota Department of Health is, you know, making different recommendations, they're the experts. But I think that, you know, in the meantime, we need to be as cautious as possible. So I'm definitely in favor of sticking with this policy, you know, into the foreseeable future until, you know, things change. Because I want to, I want our kids to be safe.
All right, Jim and then Holly.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, we're not here tonight to debate or not, shouldn't say, we're not here tonight to change policy because we can't workshop. We can discuss it. A policy is something that's always something to be work in progress and it can't go against, it can't go against state law. A policy cannot be against, opposite of what state law says either. It's, it's going to be tough for us and have people in the community who, the governor comes out and says, you no longer have to wear a mask if you're vaccinated in the public. Whereas fourteen months ago, he said everybody had to wear it, no one followed it because he said that. People are, some people are ready to ditch these things. I mean, he came out, even his school, his executive order said school boards don't have to wear them. But we've chosen to keep, keep in place everybody else inside our building to be the same. So we need to be very ready to look at modifying this if necessary as things go forward. And when does the policy committee meet again? Do they meet the third Tuesday of the month or, I don't know when they meet.
Yes, third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday, okay, I think that's something that should probably be brought there and.
Third Monday, sorry.
I said Tuesday, I did say Tuesday, third, third Monday, yeah, you're right. So I think that's a good spot to start it because, I mean, we can go back and forth and come up with fourteen different ways to change the policy in a board meeting. And that's what committees are for. But it's tough to go out there, you can no longer, and some of the big box stores that people go to or the restaurants and all that don't have to wear masks. Walking in the door, so it's all around the board here, everybody. But I think we have to be ready to change and I think we'll get some guidance here in the next few weeks. I think it changes somewhat regularly, but.
You know.
We're all trying to be safe, we're all trying to be safe, I get that, but we have to be ready to change.
Your suggested timing works well. If, if it was on, if the policy committee discussed that on June twenty first, we have that special meeting workshop on the twenty eighth, so we could consider a change at that time. And we'd have to talk about that, depends on the guidance, but that timing would work well.
We just talked to the finance committee, what he's talking about, special meeting, we haven't told anybody. Chair of the finance committee is Ms. Tower and Mr. Anderson is the parrotess. The state hasn't gotten their work done in the legislature for funding for us. So they're going into extra innings, maybe not till June fourteenth is what we're hearing, so we'll talk about that the next agenda meeting.
Can't talk about it right now, Jim.
But no, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but we're just.
The timing is.
He's talking about.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it, but I'm saying it, but I'm not saying it, saying it.
Yeah, don't say it. Oh, the year in the queue.
Okay, Arlen, you warmed my heart when you said we have to follow policy. I, I just want you to know that my heart just burst wide open when you said we have to follow policy. Thank you. And I agree with everybody that when we look at changing a policy, it should go through committee first. So if the health and safety team wants to update the policy committee on what the new changes are, and then that committee brings it back to the larger group, then I think we can have a fruitful discussion about what it should be. But Arlen, I could have just about hugged you through the screen when you said we have to follow policy. Yep, just like one big squish. Thank you.
All right, so it sounds like more to be had on that one, but, you know, like every other policy, it always has to be looked at and revised and to make, make changes as we need to. So I think that we have a good plan in place. Arlen, I'll give you the last word.
Thank you. I, I guess I don't see this as a legislative and policy discussion on the need to have a mask or not. I would rather defer to our COVID team to make recommendations to the board if we're doing it. And be honest with you, if there's any changes, I'd like to take action on June, June seventh, I guess, whatever that date is. Certainly leave that option there if something comes in there. I've been a strong proponent of wearing masks, but I, in certain situations, I'm ready to just ditch my mask now. And I, and I get it, we're, we're in a group of, I was strong proponent to wear the mask until we got vaccinated and our staff had the opportunity. We got to that point. We still have the issue of our students, our children under twelve that cannot get vaccinated. And so we have to find something that works with that and still meets the needs of everybody else. And I feel totally safe being around people without a mask now that I'm probably vaccinated. And not it, but we have to realize not everybody has chosen to be vaccinated for medical reasons sometimes too. It may not be that they don't want to, they might have medical reasons why they can't. So we also have to be respectful of the adults in that situation. But I'm hoping we can have something from our COVID team to talk about at our June meeting. But like I say, I don't feel this is a legislative and policy issue as much as a COVID team making recommendations.
Is this a policy, school policy? And is that, is that the legislative and policy committee reviews the policies of the school board or who does?
Yeah, it'd be the legislative and policy committee typically. Yeah, the face mask policy, you know, was such an urgent thing last late summer, early fall. So I'm not sure if it went through that.
That came from MSBA, didn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we skipped it to, to adopt it in the beginning. But now we, you know, we need to keep up with the times, so that needs to be reviewed.
Yeah, certainly, we could have the COVID team and administrative team look at potential changes and then either present it directly to the board or go through the policy committee meeting, you know?
I, I just think, you know, we've got, it's two weeks to the seventh and we're not sure how much, if anything, is going to change till then. But two more weeks after that, it may, so having a timeframe, that's fine if you're bringing the seventh. But I still think the twenty first is, it needs to be more, it needs to be reviewed by the policy committee, that's what we have for.
Yeah, it would be a lot easier in a smaller committee setting.
Exactly.
Yeah, definitely.
The only thing that I would say is that, you know, if the recommendation comes out from whomever that says those kids don't have to wear a mask between those two settings and, you know, we're thinking about it's eighty-five degrees, it's humid and the kid, you know, I just, I would hate to make those kids wear those masks for, you know, two or three or four weeks before we can act on it. So I guess we're just going to have to see how it goes and maybe we just have a special meeting to either revoke or revise that eight oh eight as needed.
We could just have an update and if we need to adjust it then, we can, but eventually it has to go back to the committee.
Right, but then by the time we could act on that would be well into July, unless we had a special meeting.
We're not, we're not, we're assuming if something's going to happen by the seventh, but we're not sure anything will happen by the seventh.
Right, right. I think it's, I think just to leave it kind of open ended for now. But, I mean, the, the plan is to have a discussion through the committee, but if we, maybe we'll put it on the agenda for the seventh. And we'll just play it by ear, I guess, on that one.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, well then, it's seven forty-five, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Slow move.
Ah, Jim beat you, Holly.
Slow.
Not, he, I, I won this time, all right, fine, second turkey.
All right, I will go with, let's see, where's my list, Jim? To adjourn, Nikki.
Hi.
Arlen?
Hi.
Anna?
Hi.
Holly?
Hi.
Jennifer?
Hi.
And Chair votes, I, we are adjourned at seven forty-four.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, good night, everyone.
Bye.